Could you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Public comments, agenda items only. Any topic related to the agenda may be addressed except for personnel or specific student issues. The school board encourages public participation at its meetings. To allow for efficiency in conducting meetings and to give each speaker a fair opportunity to present their views, the following shall apply to the public speaking portion of the agenda. Each speaker shall state their name. Any questions/concerns be submitted in writing with speaker's contact information as in name, address, phone number. Each speaker shall be limited to a time approximately five minutes, which is agreed upon by the board. The board will not permit discussion involving individual personnel or students. Direct all remarks to chair. Community members may not poll individual board members nor debate other community members in attendance. Once again, members of the community are encouraged to attend and speak during public comments. Undue interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Board of Education business will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. While individuals have the right to email board, the board or board members with questions or concerns at any time, the board will not read emails aloud during the public participation portion of the meeting. Thank you. Joel?
Good evening. Here's the petition.
Yes, special presentation, Leaders of the Pack.
Good evening. My name is Mrs. Samuel and this is Mr. Darling. I'm here with Anthony Nostron. Come closer, come closer. He's our model 5th grade student who is getting the Leader of the Pack Award today. He consistently demonstrates preparedness. He's eager to learn and challenges himself to always do his best. Anthony perseveres through academic challenges and advocates for himself on a daily basis. Anthony's work habits are exemplary. He is kind, polite, and demonstrates empathy to peers and adults. Just recently, he also received a Husky High Five and a certificate for displaying model behavior. So today, I'd like to wish you congratulations. Your teacher's also an audience. There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, I definitely need to do it.
Dad?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So from the middle school, we have 8th grader Emma Turner. She is an amazing addition to our school. We really love having her and her teachers all said so many amazing things. I can't read them all, but I will take some snippets. So here we go. So Mrs. Leahy, who is here actually, said, "Emma shines. She's wise beyond her years. Personally brings everyone around her into her happy orbit. She recognizes the good in every person and genuinely cares about what is best for every individual. Emma holds herself to high standards academically and her candor and humility about her success makes it easy for her peers to admire her and want to follow her lead." Mr. Kohler said, "Emma is that warm cup of tea after a long day out in the snow." Very Mr. Kohler. "She is the positive light that can change someone's whole day. Although tranquil and sometimes timid, she's independent, strong-willed, and determined to always do her best." Ms. Jansen, who's also here, said, "She works hard. She's always respectful of her adults and peers and always has a smile on her face. Emma loves all things 80's," which I didn't know, "horror movies and Halloween. That just adds to her charm." And then lastly, Mr. Banks said, "Your determination and resilience in the classroom," this is kind of advice, actually, "will make you very successful with any endeavor you set yourself upon. Emma, always remember, even if times get tough, you're a strong, intelligent, thoughtful, and compassionate young lady. It was my privilege to be one of your teachers. So congratulations, well deserved."
Do you want a picture?
Thank you, Grandma.
Whoever.
We got the whole family.
Yeah.
Come on up.
This is special.
Thanks, Dad.
I'll take it. You sit. Get in there. No more. Go ahead. We got time.
I'll say it.
Go for it, Grandpa.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, well, who are we facing? You?
Congratulations.
Ready? Good. Nice job. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Doesn't need any more explanation. Good evening, everyone. For the high school, we have Angelina Redner. Her teachers have given a long list of amazing accomplishments. Coach Geller says that Angelina is self-motivated, responsible, and dependable here at Highland High School. I've been very fortunate to see her grow into a mature senior. She's definitely deserving to be chosen as Leader of the Pack. Mr. Miller explains, "Angelina is a well-rounded young woman with a broad range of interests and involvement in both her school and community. She is a mature and responsible student who has been an incredible asset to our school. No one to ever settle. She was always looking to go the extra mile and do whatever she can to improve herself in regard to her academics and extracurriculars. Angelina is a highly motivated young woman who strives to find success in all that she does, and if it does not come easy for her, she will persevere and work to her desired level of success." In English, Mr. Tatum explained that Angelina is a creative and insightful young woman. She is not afraid to take risks in her work, especially if they lead to a more authentic expression of self. She's kind, empathetic, supportive of her classmates, and she's a blast to just sit and have a conversation with. And as a Bosie student, her teacher, Ms. Lord, said that Angelina is a talented artist, a committed student, and most importantly, kind to everyone. For no reason, several times, she has baked cookies and brought them to class for all to share. You never brought any from Mrs. Zimmer. She has a circle of very close friends that she met while here at Bosie's and is always thoughtful and kind to all of her peers. Angelina asks engaging questions and always has interesting insight when we critique each other's arts projects. I'm so proud of her. And in speaking with Angelina, Mr. Zimmer and I learned that she is looking to pursue arts education, possibly at New Paltz or Hunter or another great school, to become an art teacher. So congratulations. Great job.
Anne, stand with her.
Yeah, come on, family.
They're good.
One thing isn't saying she needs better posture.
Anne, you want to go on the other side? There you go. Very good.
Oh, I'm fine with the whole thing.
Yes, at this moment in time, we're going to have a slight change to our agenda. Next up, for the board members, we're going to go to item four in new business, and that's the textbook review middle school presentation. We're going to move it up to this time slot. Okay? Thank you.
Nothing like a good old textbook review to clear.
It'll scare everybody away.
Mike's not on purpose.
Good evening. So in front of you, so this is Mrs. Jansen. She's going to be doing most of the talking this evening, but she's our 7th and 8th grade math teacher, and she has worked very closely with EdGems and with the rest of our math department on this program that we have been piloting for the past year. So in front of you, each of you have a textbook from the company. There are different levels. Mr. Miller, you have the teacher version, so everyone else has either the 6th, 7th, or 8th grade textbook in front of them. So you guys can review that while we're talking about EdGems. Yes, Mr. Miller has all the answers. Mrs. Jansen also provided a sample lesson that you guys can see, an activity that they do in class, and she will go over that in a few minutes, so you can kind of see how the lessons translate from online to an activity within the classroom. I'm just going to briefly go over how we arrived at EdGems for our program. So as we know, we are a TSI-designated school, and for one of the reasons being our math scores. So over all of last year, our entire math department got together and we worked with a math consultant from Ulster Bosie's. The first thing we worked on was common vocabulary language from 6th, 7th, and 8th grade to make sure it was completely consistent between all grade levels and to make sure that we weren't confusing kids on things that they were learning in 6th grade but didn't know it was the same word or a different word just being taught differently in 7th and 8th grade. After we did that, we developed a rubric to assess the programs that were out there. So this took a lot of time to first figure out what it is that we needed as a math department, and what we were using as part of the guide for this was the skills that our students were lacking. So we looked at programs that were there to identify, that had programs to help us identify those areas through our subgroups and through our benchmarks and our iXL, which is another program that I talked about last year that we use to help guide our instruction. So once we figured out the rubric and what we are looking for and what we are really looking for in a math program, we identified 10 programs that we thought may have some of the materials, curriculum that we had in our rubric. Those 10 math programs, we then spent hours and hours and hours working on, looking through, talking to reps, and using the rubric and putting in the rubric what areas these programs met, which ones they didn't, and what things we really needed to look at most. Out of that, we decided on three math programs, and from those math programs, we then brought in another rep who did some training with us last year on those three programs. From there, we chose EdGems to do a full pilot, which is what we are in the midst of this year. And from there, I'm going to let Mrs. Jansen take it away.
Hello. Okay, so what you see in front of you on the left-hand side is what students see in SchoolEg. SchoolEg is the learning management system that we use in the middle school and I believe also in the high school. And as you can see, it's very colorful and very student-friendly, just the look of it. That was one of the first things that we noticed as teachers. We wanted something that didn't just look like pages out of a textbook. It had to look interesting. On the right-hand side, when students click on one of the units, it opens up and you can see all the lessons. My favorite part about this is that students have access to the entire curriculum from day one of the school year. So if a parent wants to go ahead and wants to enhance their own students' learning from home, they have the ability to do that at any time. There was a lot of stuff that we were looking for as a math department that we didn't find in a typical textbook, and we were able to find a lot of those things in EdGems. And one of them in particular, you have in front of you, and I'll talk more about in just a minute, and that's the activity-based stuff that EdGems offers. Can you go to the next one? Thank you. There we go. So what's in a typical lesson? There are unit vocabulary sheets that are filled in, some that are not. So right there, we have scaffolding for students that need it, already built in. There are explore activities where before we teach a lesson, students have an opportunity to engage prior knowledge. That's something that most textbooks don't really offer in a full lesson. It's more like a quick question. This really gives us a great opportunity to activate all that prior knowledge, all that prior vocabulary. There's built-in differentiated practice. Not only is it already built in, but we can go into any one of those worksheets or assignments and modify them further as we see fit. An amazing thing that we wouldn't find in a typical textbook. It doesn't show it on here. This is actually the student view, but in the teacher view, we also have assessments already available. There's an A assessment and a B assessment, and then there's a tiered A and B assessment for students who may not be ready to take the typical assessment that everyone else is ready for. Again, these materials are already there and created and available for us to use, modify, and implement when we're ready. The online practice is probably the only thing we haven't been able to use, and I think we talked about that a little bit today. That's because we're still in the pilot. So once we go to the full program, I think that will work better for us. Right now, it just doesn't work the way we would want it to, but again, I think it's because we're in the pilot program. Parent guides and teacher gems I highlighted because I want you to see a little bit more of what those look like, and then every lesson has a lesson video already recorded and available for students. So if we have students that miss school or a student who maybe couldn't pay attention during class time and wants to see that instruction over again, it's already there in EdGems for them to go back and watch, or their parents to go back and watch if they want to. And yes, I have had parents tell me that they have watched videos with their students. So it does happen. The parent guides are another favorite piece for me. Parents are always asking, "How can I support my child at home?" And EdGems has one of these parent guides for every single grade level, for every single unit that we do. They highlight how parents can help at home, important vocabulary terms, how math that they should have already learned is going to be used in this unit, and how what they're going to use in this unit is going to be used in later classes or later units in that same year. So really showing why this is important and why they need to learn it. Next. And then my favorite part of EdGems, and the one thing that it offered that we just didn't find in any other program, were activity-based practice. So not just a worksheet for kids to do independently, but activities that encourage and foster collaboration, discussion, discourse. I always say math fights are my favorite fights, and we have a lot of them, and it's really important for these kids to do that on a regular basis. I love it when the students can become the teachers and they can work together. So that's what we see happen with these activities. So the one that I provided for you is called Climb the Ladder, and each Climb the Ladder activity has four scaffolded activities with it. Students work together in groups on these activities, one piece at a time. So rather than being overwhelmed with a whole bunch of problems, they work on one set at a time. They work on them together. This really helps those targeted students that we know need the extra support to just focus on one skill at a time, to just focus on one problem at a time, and to get as much support as they need, whether it's from their teacher who's moving around the room or from their peers at their own table. Once they finish one problem or one sheet of problems, they can come up, they get it checked, and we go, "Wow, you did a great job with that. You did so great. You're going to get an expert tent." That lets other people in the class know that you know what you're doing, and if they have a question, they can come and talk to you. And as crazy it may sound, these 8th graders love these expert tents. They love to brag about them. So it was just, it was awesome to see them get excited about not only learning but helping each other, and "Which activity are we going to do today? Oh, why can't we do that one again?" It's something that I haven't seen in a long time, so it was really nice. And of course, my favorite part is that this stuff is stuff I already have access to. If I know that I have a unit that's coming up that's really challenging for students, I don't have to just give them a worksheet. I can focus on some activity stuff. If the activities aren't working and they need more focused practice, I can shift gears, and all of this stuff is already available to me on multiple levels, and I think it's really the best service for our students at this time.
Oh, yes, thank you. You want to go back to screens? So one of the things on here in the upper right-hand corner says Student Gems, and you can't click on it in here because I didn't set it up for that, but when we click on Student Gems, what's in there are links to outside activities. It links to Khan Academy. It links to, I don't know if it links to Castle Learning, but it does link to iXL, and that is another math program that we use. And what I really appreciate about it is that it doesn't just link to iXL as a site, it links to the specific lesson that supports this skill. So for AIS students, if they're in AIS and the teacher knows what we're working on in class, they can say, "Okay, let's go into these Student Gems and figure out which iXL lesson will help support this skill," and they can work on it directly from there. Yeah? Any questions? Questions?
Is this the series you're recommending for grades 6, 7, and 8?
Yes. EdGems was specifically designed with the middle school student in mind. That's one of their claims to fame, is that it's not a program that was designed for elementary school that was then adapted for middle school, or something that was designed for high school and then adapted for middle school. This was designed specifically with middle school students in mind, and I believe we are recommending it at this time. That's our recommendation.
And a lot of times, these series come with additional resources, some you pointed out, and is that all part of the package?
Yes. It's a one that you buy every, so when you buy the price, you buy, it gets everything. So everything is linked. You don't have to buy anything else, any other programs or anything. It also has an algebra component, which was also something we were looking for because we do have Algebra I in 8th grade. So it actually extends into that, that Mr. Foreman can use as well.
Separate advanced curriculum?
Yes.
Yeah, it also has a separate advanced curriculum for 6th and 7th grade. I think, I don't want to speak to that too much. I know there is an advanced curriculum.
Yeah, well, let's get the base set and see where that kind of moves us from there. Sounds good.
Are all of your math classes currently participating in this pilot?
So about 80%. We have one math teacher who came late to the, not late to begin, but wasn't hired until after we'd kind of gone through it all, so there is a teacher in every grade level doing this, yes. She's now been trained and is actually starting to use it in the last month.
Do you find the students are using this at home? Are you able to tell that?
I can.
From the system?
That's a good question. Can I tell if they're logging directly into this? I can tell that they're logging into SchoolEg, and I can see how much time they're spending there. Most of what we do with this curriculum is in the classroom. There's not a whole lot at this point that I am sending home for students to do, although that is an option, but a lot of it is that they have to be in school because I want them doing the collaborative piece. That's where a lot of that support comes from.
This sounds really exciting.
We also use iXL for extra work at home for practice and exercise. And so the bonus is because we do the iXL at home and they're supposed to be doing exercises at home, we notice the areas that maybe they are lacking, which then when you log into this, the teachers are seeing. So it's kind of like trying really and all of that between the benchmarks, iXL, and then the classwork, we're really beginning to identify those key areas where either a small group or a large group of students aren't understanding something and we reinforce it with this material, which is really important.
There are, another thing that they have, EdGems has a lot of built-in formative assessments, just little, I don't want to call them quizzes, there are checkpoints along the way. Are they getting this skill before we get to a test? There's a lot of that just built in naturally, so it's really, it's great. I love it.
Just skimming through the book, and I know, you know, math at this level is a lot of reading comprehension.
Yes.
You might have touched on it earlier. How do you address those individuals that have lesser reading and comprehension levels as they come through 6th, 7th, and 8th grade? Is there anything in here that's going to pinpoint those deficiencies where you can work on it?
For reading specifically?
Reading comprehension, because the math problems are a majority of our reading comprehension. And if a child can't read to that certain level or comprehend to that certain level, then what are we, how are we addressing that? Are we giving them additional services? How will we address those individuals that...
That are below grade level or are in some kind of AI service. So they are certainly getting a service for below reading level. And then the best part is that if we know a student is below grade level for reading, they're reinforcing that in the classroom and all of the work that goes home, they're going over with them in class first. So in here, they don't have to go through the whole textbook to find what they need, which is great. They can just clip on, "Oh, I'm supposed to be doing the tiered practice." So they don't need to flip to page 25 and read a paragraph. It's already in short form for them in here, which is the bonus of having it. Also, if we purchase the program, we will get a digital textbook. Everest, which is the ebook in the bottom left corner, which also comes in different languages, which is amazing.
And that has a read-aloud function in it as well.
So everything can be done through there.
And does this work well on all the student devices that students are using?
Yes.
So just with the stretcher, so for a given lesson, so you go through that same order and then you're able to have some flexibility if you need like with more time in certain areas, or is it...
Absolutely. So they do have a recommended or a suggested order of activities. Even in their suggested order of activities, they don't recommend necessarily doing everything. It's just, "Hey, this is what looks good to us." And then I can look at it as the professional and say, "Hmm, that doesn't work for me." And I can make kind of my own idea of what I want. The proficient, the tiered, and the challenge practice is one thing in particular. I wouldn't do all three of those as three separate pieces. I may offer them all in the same class period and say, "Hey, this is the skill that we're practicing. If you're struggling with this, maybe you were absent for a few days, or the reading is too hard, that tiered practice is just a little bit of a lower level, but the same skill. The proficient practice is right where everybody should be." And then the challenge practice truly is a challenge practice for the students who understand the skill and need to go a little bit beyond. So those students who we typically have a hard time servicing because they're ready for more and we don't always know how much more to do for them, this offers a great challenge, still scaffolded, but challenge practice for them.
And then the iXL is more for the foundational skills that are...
It can be for foundational, but it can also push them beyond. I believe it goes up to 9th grade math, the iXL, so they kind of will top out on that eventually, but I haven't seen that yet.
And as far as use, is that being used at home exclusively, iXL?
Not exclusively, no. It's an option to use it at home, but we do use it in school as well.
Because that's one of, just kids that are, you know, behind, you know, just kind of making sure they're trying to get those early skills that are missing.
Yes. iXL is used a lot in AIS math to help support those lower skills, for sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
I see you looking at the answer, Mr. McCutcheon.
I did provide you with the answer key, yes. Yes.
I got that one right. One of them was pretty tough, gang, so, but I nailed it.
Good, good.
Megan, when did you start looking at this series?
We started the pilot for this in September.
You did?
Yes, and we looked at all of last year with looking at multiple programs. We first worked on vocabulary with the consultant from Bosie's, because that's really important and we know that's important. And then we moved from that into coming up with things that we knew as a math department based on our TSI, like the targeted areas we knew we needed to improve upon. And then from there, we made a rubric, and then we stuck with that rubric and really went on to all the different programs that we had learned about and went through them. And Karen helped us, and she spoke to, I can't count how many districts, to see which ones they were using, and we looked at all of them and tried to see, "All right, where does this help us? Where are the areas that we know we need to be able to support our students? And what program can we find that's going to meet those needs?" Because we knew that was most important for us. And then the challenge practice truly is a challenge practice for the students who understand the skill and need to go a little bit beyond. So those students who we typically have a hard time servicing because they're ready for more and we don't always know how much more to do for them, this offers a great challenge, still scaffold, but challenge practice for them.
And then the IXL is more for the foundational skills that are?
It can be for foundational, but it can also push them beyond. I believe it goes up to ninth grade math, the IXL. So they, they kind of will top out on that eventually, but I haven't seen that yet.
And as far as use of, that's being used at home exclusively, IXL or?
Not exclusively, no. It's an option to use it at home, but we do use it in school as well.
Because that's one of, just kids that are, you know, behind, you know, just kind of making sure they're trying to get those early skills that are missing.
IXL is used a lot in AIS math to help support those, those lower skills, for sure.
Thank you.
Yes. I did provide you with the answer key, yes. Yes.
I got that one right. One of them was pretty tough, gang, so. But I nailed it.
Good, good.
Megan, how, when did you start looking at this series?
We started the pilot for this in September.
You did?
Yes. And we looked, took all of last year with looking at multiple programs. We first worked on vocabulary with the consultant from OZI, because that's really important and we know that's important. And then we moved from that into identity, coming up with things that we knew as a math program based on our TSI, like the targeted areas we knew we needed to improve upon. And then from there, we made a rubric. And then we stuck with that rubric. And really went on to all the different programs that we had learned about and went through them. And Karen helped us and she spoke to, I can't count how many districts to see which ones they were using. And we looked at all of them and tried to see, all right, where does this help us? Where are the areas that we know we need to be able to support our students? And what program can we find that's going to meet those needs? Because we knew that was most important for us.
So there was a, did you have like a shortlist of series to look at? And then this one?
I mean, the ones we put into the rubric were, there was 10 different programs.
We, we kept whittling it down a little bit at a time.
So it was almost like about a year it took you really?
Yep, it took a whole year.
Okay. Wow.
And that was after meeting with the reps and consultants and teachers from each, the, for down to three. We met with those as a team. We met with them and we asked them, we looked at their programs. They gave us a, you know, quick trial. We could log in, we could see, we found things we may not have liked or didn't understand. We asked questions, we had Zoom meetings with them. And even just the willingness to work with us and figure out what we needed, they got to name, what did you guys name?
They named, the kids named the voice of Ed Gems.
And so they really are, let's hope they get a response to you and wants to do whatever they need to help us in a trial.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So all of this seems awesome, honestly. I mean, it seems really exciting, especially for you guys as educators as well as the students. What challenges have you seen? Have you seen any, what areas, is there anything lacking? We know in, in the real world, nothing's perfect, right? So what are some of the challenges? Just to understand kind of what you've seen.
Well, the quiz piece doesn't give us names, so that's why we haven't been using it. It gives a dash. So that would be a great tool that once we purchase the program, then that, those names will be built in to the program differently for us to be able, so when they do like a quiz or a checkpoint, that'd be one more set of data, one more set of assessments that we would have to say, okay, that 30-minute lesson, I need to go back and reteach because it seems like, you know, 20% of my kids aren't getting it. Or, so that's one piece that would be valuable for us. And then the ebook, but I think those are also just things that we don't get yet. And that would be awesome for anyone at home, really. And then the read aloud piece that would come with that is phenomenal.
Kind of a good problem to have that there's so much available here that I just kind of said, well, that's not working, so let me just try to do everything else. So it, it didn't end up being as big of a hindrance as I thought it would, not having that yet. But I think now that I have everything else down, once that's available, it'll be a great support.
I know in the beginning, Karen spent hours working with them just to keep the Schoology and getting all of our kids' needs and through class rosters, but, so that was a huge hurdle in the beginning.
It's great tech support. They offer great support.
Yeah, excellent.
That's always good to hear.
And they're, they're very responsive. If we send an email or a text message at this point, they, they respond within the same day. So it's excellent.
Great job.
So I'd say that was the biggest hurdle, was linking to Schoology probably when we needed that. That was the, one of the major reasons why we were most interested in this program was because it was going to be something the kids didn't have to relearn. They could log into Schoology and the app, the app would be right there for them to get into, which is huge for us.
A lot of the programs that we looked at didn't, weren't Schoology friendly. And this was one of the two or three that, that was, which was a big driving, driving piece of that.
Makes it a lot easier.
Yes.
It's one thing they know, yep.
So ideally, a student, this is book two in the series, right? So that would align with seventh grade traditionally. Book one in the series, would that pick up, and Mr. Darling, on what the students are leaving the elementary school knowing? Will it transition?
So Megan and I, she talked a little bit about, you know, how they kind of were led to Ed Gems, primarily because of its connection with Schoology, which is something that we don't necessarily use as much at the elementary school. So we've been talking about just that connection between the program that we're looking at, the programs that we were investigating that'll present at some point, to make sure that there isn't a disconnect between where our students are leaving off in fifth grade and where they're picking up in sixth grade. And we don't, we don't have any concerns about that at this time.
Continuity is, is the key.
Yes.
The bonus is that Mr. Trancher, who is the OZI's consultant, works in both of our buildings with both of our teams. So he's going to be a huge person that we're both going to be able to utilize in. He's going to know both math programs and he's going to make sure that there's consistency between the two programs, especially with vocabulary, because we know that's most important when it comes to what words they're hearing in elementary school and the same words they're hearing in middle school.
Thank you.
As part of the TSI plan, we're allotted money. And as Megan mentioned, this process started a long time ago. So over the summer, when we were looking at this, we identified that, you know, having a consistent program for each of the buildings was one of our biggest targets that we needed. So we allotted money in our TSI grants just for that purpose. So, you know, the program that we would be purchasing would be done through that TSI grant money.
Any questions?
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Nice work. Okay, now we're at Curriculum and Instruction, Principals' Monthly Reports.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you're all doing well. Good to see you again and hope you had a good holiday with your families. So I wanted to start off with something that was in the board report, but just wanted to spend a few extra minutes on it, which is the PBIS assembly that we had had on Friday, April 8th, the day before the students went on break. So that was something that we had premiered, if you remember the Bark video here a few months ago. And we had been meaning to get it out to students as soon as we could bring them all together. And so we had two grade levels at a time come in. We did a full assembly around, you know, a reminder of what Bark was that they had learned about in their classroom on a couple of occasions at this point. And then we premiered the video for the students, which they really enjoyed. You know, you could hear a pin drop in the, in the gymnasium, which was nice. You know, we treated it like a movie premiere. And then after that, we, we introduced this new idea called the Husky High Five. You know, so we've done a lot of positive reinforcement with paw prints that students received for positive behaviors. We just included a certificate that Anthony Nostrand actually received, you know, during that last week as well. But recognition, just, you know, an additional step of recognition for students in front of their peers, where they were called up during the assembly, received a certificate, and got a high five from Hudson, our Husky. So I think I included some pictures for you in the report, but it was a really positive event. You know, we're looking forward to doing lots more of those whole group recognition events now that we can do that type of thing again. You know, and also including attendance, you know, recognizing students for positive attendance or growth in attendance and some of those things that you would typically see in a PBIS assembly. So just wanted to talk a little bit about that. Aside from the board report, I just wanted to update you that we did have our picture day yesterday with Upstate Images. That was the second time that they came to us this year. And it was very successful, no, no, you know, issues whatsoever. So they've been great to work with. They're also coming back Friday to do a fifth grade whole grade level photo, as well as a staff photo, so we're excited about that. We, we did have our state tests for ELA about two weeks ago, three weeks ago now. And that went, that went very smoothly. I'd like to thank Mr. Freer for the systems that he put in place and kind of shared with me, because I could just watch him over the last, you know, really last year and kept basically everything the same. The teachers are very familiar with how the process works. And so, you know, that can be a very stressful time for teachers and kids. And I felt like having a, a smooth system helps alleviate some of that anxiety. We did end up with about 19% opting out, which is, which is great in my opinion. You know, some years I've seen have gone, have been around 40-ish percent in the height of the opt-out movement. So I'm hopeful that this gives us a more realistic, if you will, baseline of where our students are at coming out of COVID and something that we can build off of over the next number of years on these state tests. I'd like to publicly thank Harriet Meyer from the high school. She's been the district liaison for the direct committee. And she had done an activity at the high school, I believe a few months ago with teachers, where they, it was a reflection, a curriculum reflection. And, you know, we were interested in having her do it with elementary school teachers. And she came down during our faculty meeting yesterday and just went through that with them about, primarily about social emotional learning and some bullet points on what teachers are currently doing in their classroom and brainstorming ideas about how they can, you know, some ideas that they can include, whether it's in the classroom or what we could do in the building. And that came from the, the New York State Framework for Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education. So just wanted to thank her. And last but not least, over the last few days, we have had some, some parties, like classroom parties outdoors, you know, and we are getting back to scheduling those field trips and things that, you know, I know were brought up at previous, previous board meetings. So just wanted to publicly recognize, you know, teachers for quickly putting those things together, because really that's been a change over just the last few months. And they've spent a lot of time trying to engage parents and finding ways to bring them into the school community that, that we've so looked forward to doing, as well as scheduling field trips, you know, in short notice. So we're excited about the next few months leading up to, you know, bigger traditional events like our Moving Up Ceremony. Any questions?
Just thank you to you and your staff for bringing things back to normalcy. Been a couple of years and that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Hello again. Okay, just a few additions. Ms. Ozzy emailed me today to let me know that the art department is doing a district-wide art show at the Highland Library. And she's featuring, this is on May 7th, and it goes for the entire month of May. And she will be featuring 25 works of art from our advanced art class, which is pretty awesome. And we are very excited to have that artwork being posted in the Highland Library. This is for the district, so there are other art teachers who are doing this within the district as well. But I just want to let you know to stop by the Highland Library in the month of May to see that. Another really exciting thing is the Walk for Ukraine that I've been talking about with our sixth grade. Their first goal was $1,000. They are now up to $2,600 that they've raised. And this afternoon, I learned, we just received a $500 check from a local gas station who, so that, I don't know the gas station yet, so when I do, I'll make sure to publicly thank them as well. But a parent dropped that off this afternoon, which is even more exciting. And then I know Maggie is going to bring up something her PTA is doing, but, so she's going to pass out a flyer when she does that. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Megan, what was your percentage of opt-outs for your testing?
Um, 29%. So it was a bit higher, but I think what's going to happen is from the elementary school, our sixth grade had the lowest amount of opt-outs. So I believe as the years progress, there is going to be less and less students who are opting out. So our numbers in seventh and eighth grade, our eighth grade had the highest amount of opt-outs, which is pretty typical anyway, but I think that group is still part of the group that was more interested in opting out. So I think as years go on and we get more of the elementary school students, they will be more invested or will be taking the state test. So we still have a few more years before we have awesome numbers, but we're getting there.
Yep. Excellent. Great job on the fundraising.
Thanks. Well, that's all the sixth grade. Ms. Carla, she's all over it. She's very excited for Friday. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I have three additions to, additions to the high school principals' report. First, I'd like to share with you that our high school STEM teacher, Adam Iannazzoni, participated in the Boston Marathon this past Monday. Not only did Mr. Iannazzoni run in the marathon, but he finished in two hours and 51 minutes. And he was in school yesterday. He was limping a little bit, but he was hurt a little bit, but he, he did well. Congratulations to Mr. I on this impressive accomplishment. Also, congratulations to our chemistry teacher, Christopher Scro. He has been chosen as the recipient of the Excellence in High School Teaching Award presented by the Mid-Hudson Section of the American Chemical Society. Mr. Scro will be presented with the award at the section's April event called the Undergraduate Research Symposium, which will be held on Friday, April 29th, in Newburgh. Kudos to Mr. Scro on receiving this admirable recognition. Finally, today, the Highland High School Model UN Club hosted a successful mini-conference and invited New Paltz High Schools Club. It was here in the auditorium. The creative topic, the creative topic was created and voted by our students. It was this. The topic was "A Global Mythological Take on Genetics. Deities, Demigods, Heroes, and Creatures Meant to Discuss the Ethics of Humans Using the DNA Gifted to Humanity to Make Scientific and Technological Advances." Yeah, it's a mouthful. Students use the Model UN protocols to conduct the conference on this relevant topic while having researched their character and role-playing their perspective. Highland, Highland student officers worked very hard to organize and chair today's event. Thanks to advisor Stephanie Santagata and our student Model UN members. I know Maggie was there and she might mention it when she reports out later. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Bill, I'd just say, thanks Stephanie Santagata for doing that. She came to us early in the year and said, as soon as we could get kids into the building from another district, we'd like to do that. So this was a long time coming, and so please thank her on our behalf.
Certainly will.
And I will.
There were about 25 students from New Paltz High School.
That was, that's awesome.
Yeah. And their advisors, of course.
I want to tell you, I went to the Freaky Friday Show and
Wasn't it wonderful?
The song, "I've Got This," played in my head for two days. Just want to let you know.
They did a great job.
Yes, it was. It was fun.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmer. Directors' Monthly Reports. Does anybody from reading the reports have a question for a particular director? All good? Thank you for showing up, just in case. Okay, we are now at the consent agenda, part of our agenda. And I'm looking at A1 through D3. Does anybody at this moment in time have a question on any of them? Camille? Heather? No? Still open? Okay, we all agree on A1 through D3. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Sue?
Second.
Camille? All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed? Okay. Six, zero. Thank you.
So we'd like to acknowledge that Mr. Zimmer is in the audience this evening and he's just been approved to be the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Congratulations, Bill. We look forward to working with you for many years to come.
Okay. Textbook review. Whole business. No, I'm sorry, I skipped over a page. Sorry about that. Student rep. Student rep. How are you, Maggie?
Hello, everyone. So starting with the elementary school, like Mr. Darling mentioned, the elementary school is really embracing some of the fresh air with outdoor play and festivities. And today, the second grade and kindergarten spent a lot of time outside. In addition, officers from the Town of Lloyd's Police Department came by this afternoon to play a quick game of kickball with Ms. Vassano's fourth grade class. At the middle school, the bike program is restarting this week. And now that the weather is nice, they're very excited to get that going again. Students ride bikes around campus during PE class and it gives students who otherwise do not have access to bikes, the ability to learn how to ride and gain confidence in their ability. My brother was in the middle school last year and he always talked about how he loved that. So I know that's a big thing for middle schoolers. And the HMS PTA is going to be doing Spiritware fundraiser that will end on May 2nd. I'll pass around that form. And then for the high school, as Mr. Zimmer mentioned, the high school Model UN hosted our third conference of the year with, our, our second conference working with the New Paltz High School. Dimitri Bacatsias, Ally Fuller, Ria Shinoi, and I were running this and the previous conference and could really see big improvements in the kids' public speaking and debating skills. Uh, this Friday, the GSA will be participating in the GLSEN Day of Silence, which is a national student-led demonstration where LGBTQ+ students and allies all around the country and the world take a vow of silence to protest the harmful effects of harassment and discrimination of LGBTQ+ people in schools. So that's going to be a very important, um, event this Friday. And there will also be a college fair next Thursday at the high school from 9:30 to 11:00 AM for students to attend. And finally, World Language Night is next Friday, April 29th at 6:00 PM here in the cafeteria. The Spanish and French classes have been working really hard on this event and we know it'll be a great night. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Pupil Personnel, Dr. Boyd?
Hi, everyone. Um, as you can see from my report, uh, we've had a very busy month of meetings, 117 meetings over, uh, in a month with spring break built in. Um, so it's been a extremely busy time of the year. We're starting to slow down on some of those meetings, um, and we're moving into a lot of our preschool meetings, uh, and then eventually our transitioning meetings. Um, one of the things I just want to highlight, thank you to our, um, staff across all buildings. Um, as we have students that transition buildings, uh, sometimes we have them do, uh, a day of what the, their program might look like for the following year. Um, you know, there's some hesitation, obviously, as they transition buildings for some of these students that are nervous about that. Um, so all the buildings have been very accommodating for that, uh, for students spending a day of what it might look like. Um, and sometimes they buddy them with other students that they might know to help them, uh, navigate that. So just to ensure that, uh, the students are comfortable with their upcoming program and the parents as well. Mr. Darling, uh, and Ms. Coburn mentioned state testing. I want to thank them as well. Uh, state testing is available to homeschool students. I'll be honest with you, we very rarely have homeschool students, uh, take us up on that, um, at that opportunity. Uh, we did have a few this year, um, which can be very intimidating for a student who is homeschooled to go into a building that they may have never stepped in, um, or haven't been in in a while. Um, so they were very helpful to those parents who were a little nervous as well, bringing them in, um, and working them through those, those days of them coming in for the test to, to make sure that they feel comfortable, um, and put them in a good position. So thank you to them for being so accommodating. Um, we're at a point in the year, uh, you know, finishing up annual reviews, third quarter, uh, progress reports will be going out next week. Uh, third quarter homeschool reports are coming in, so it's a busy time as we look at students, how they've done. Uh, this is a pretty important time of the year where students that we try to really ensure that they continue to be engaged, um, and that we're looking at their progress to make sure that, uh, we make this last quarter as meaningful as possible for them. Uh, so sometimes it's some extra conversations from our teachers, um, with families and with students, uh, to keep that motivation going, especially coming back off of spring break. So thank you to all those teachers and staff members for having those conversations. Tonight, you approved, um, a renewal for our contract, uh, for Magbo. Um, they've been absolutely phenomenal to work with, so thank you for that. Um, they've been a great partner with us, uh, in, um, working together through those Medicaid hurdles that we, that we do to get some of that funding, uh, recoup from that. So, uh, just, you know, thank you to them and thank you to you guys for approving that, that we continue to work with them.
Thank you.
Other than that, uh, you know, we're coming up on kindergarten screening and, you know, that's the time for us to take a look at some of our incoming kindergarten students and then it's going to be some outside visits to some of the preschools as well, uh, to make sure that we are prepared as much as possible for our incoming, uh, students come September.
It was interesting about the homeschool students taking the test. Um, did the parents, uh, comment why they, they wanted to do it since it's so unusual? Or?
Um, I, I think, um, we've had an increase in homeschool, so some of the students that are currently being homeschooled are students that, um, would not have been in the past, you know, coming off the pandemic. So there are students that, uh, parents would have had them take them had they been in school. Um, sometimes if it's a student that's, you know, homeschooled, K-12, um, they don't engage in some of that, uh, in some of that testing. Um, but I know that the parents that did choose to do it, um, were very eager to talk about how they did. They wanted the results right away.
Oh, my goodness.
You know, unfortunately, it's going to be a while. Um, you know, we don't, we don't get them for quite a while, so sorry, we, we can't tell you right now. Um, but, um, and some of them just want to make sure, I think that the work that they're doing at home, that they're on par.
Good for them.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many homeschool do we have now?
Uh, 55 currently.
Oh, goodness. Okay.
Yeah, and typical, in past years, um, it always hovered around the high twenties.
Hmm, yeah. Wow.
Good.
Okay, so, uh, as a reminder, we have the Spring Gala this Saturday night at Novellas, where we will be honoring, uh, Lenny Ockmody, Patty Stephens, and Peter Miller. There are tickets still available. If anyone is interested and has not already gotten a ticket, please, uh, reach out to either Carly in my office or Luke on the flyers that have been posted around the community. Two items, uh, to support Zach Osterhout and his family. Uh, the Rotary will be hosting a spaghetti dinner this Saturday, sorry, sorry, Sunday night. It's actually afternoon and evening, uh, the 24th. Um, I know I sent this flyer out to all the board, but, uh, there are plenty of, uh, dinners still available. I was at Rotary this morning. Oh my goodness, it's only this morning. I feel like it was yesterday. It's been a long day. I was at Rotary this morning and they said that, uh, they would like to sell 200 dinners and they're right now at about 180. So if you have not already signed up to do that, I know the deadline has passed, but they are still taking, uh, folks and, uh, there will be some walk-ins that day. They didn't think that was going to be the case in the beginning, but, um, please take advantage of that. Also, we will be hosting, in conjunction with the Osterhout family, a blood drive here at the high school on May 14th. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Murphy. He's been the go-to on that, helping the Osterhout family organize that, so thank you. Uh, our next direct meeting is this coming Tuesday. As you know, last month's got canceled due to, uh, various reasons, but mainly that we had folks that were ill. Um, it will be this coming Tuesday, the 26th at 6:00 PM. And if all goes well, I think we are back in person, according to my calendar. So, um, please come out for that. It would be in the library. That would be great to see you. On May 6th, I know I spoke a little bit about this, uh, last month, but, uh, we talked more about it today in our cabinet meeting. Uh, we have, uh, a tech day, or at least a portion of the day dedicated to technology. Uh, there are webinars that are through Nice Gate. Uh, I know I mentioned that we were one of the, uh, areas of the state that were, uh, granted, uh, access to, uh, the grant that they applied for. So our teachers have opportunities to take part in webinars around technology and they can get CTE hours for that. So we are asking that all teachers participate in at least one webinar. The, the shortest one is about three hours and then they could use, uh, other time that day to work as grade levels and departments. We will also have kindergarten screening that day, so those teachers would not actually be taking part in the Nice Gate, uh, opportunity. But Nice Gate is, uh, those webinars are open, uh, for weeks, uh, into the, into the coming months. So, um, you know, they can do it during grade level meetings and they can also do it on their own time. For those that need CTE hours, this is a great opportunity for them to, uh, to do that and they can do it at any hour of the day. I know I'm a broken record on this next one, but we have lots of COVID-at-home tests. Please stop by any building, pick them up from the security vestibule. Uh, our, our folks are there to hand them out. They're in the health offices. They're in my office and I want them all out of my office as soon as possible. So please do not buy at-home tests. We have plenty to feed the community, uh, and, uh, we want you to take us up on that. The, we did turn off the, we were able to turn off the valve on that, so no more tests will be delivered unless we get into a spot where we need them again and then we can turn it back on, but we asked them to shut that down. Uh, some exciting news. Uh, as you know, we, um, we have our capital improvement project scheduled for October of 2022. Uh, during the spring recess last week, I came in and Mr. Miller and I went around with, uh, CS Arch, our architect firm. We got pictures of all of the areas that are part of the base project and the Proposition 2. It started out as a rainy day, but midday, the sun came out and we got a really great, uh, drone footage, uh, of the backfield. So that will all be part of a video that CS Arch will be, uh, providing for us to help to, to, uh, get this information out to, uh, the community. That's just one of the things that they'll be doing, but they'll also be making those poster boards for us once our plans are, um, drawn up in a more formalized manner. Uh, one of the things that they had as an option that was part of the project and built into what we have already contracted for was a save-the-date postcard. So, uh, some of the, just quick information about when the vote is, where to get more information, that type of thing, we will have those postcards go out right after the, um, the regular budget vote. The budget vote is on October, or sorry, May 17th, uh, our regular budget vote, and then we will get those postcards out. We thought about sending them out in advance, but we didn't want to confuse people with two sets of literature at the same time. So, um, we will get some save-the-date postcards out, uh, in May. Interviewing, um, we had completed interviews today for a French position for next year. Uh, we're hoping to have that finalized and for the board's approval at the next meeting. And some possibilities within the next week to get finalized, uh, would be, um, library media specialist for the middle school and high school, an APE teacher and TA, uh, leave replacement for the elementary school, and the tech director we hope to have to the board in the next, uh, in the next coming week. So stay tuned for that. Uh, the night before spring break, the high school had the rock concert. I missed it because I was at BOSIS that evening, but BOSIS was equally, uh, fun and entertaining and we got to see what those programs at BOSIS afforded our students. Uh, it was just an incredible evening, uh, but I heard great things about this and I know there's video. I know I sent that video out of, uh, at least Mr. Zimmer doing some kind of a little dance. I know I sent that out to the board, but I think I can, I can sell it to anyone who'd like to have a copy. He did bust a move. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Zimmer, for participating in that with the music teachers and our students. Uh, that seemed like it was a great evening and it had rave reviews. Um, at the request of the board, uh, I have scheduled BOSIS, uh, to be here on May 3rd to give a presentation on the P-Tech program. So we will have that going on. And then one final thing, Mr. Zimmer and I will be attending the Maris Teacher Education Advisory Board Panel tomorrow evening. Um, that's something that happens on a regular basis and we're excited to go there and talk about the things that we'd like to see teacher education programs, uh, do for our local schools in the coming year. So it's always a nice evening to, to get our opinions out there. So any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you, Joel. Board of Education, new business, BOSIS administrative budget vote. Be resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, approves the Ulster County Board of Cooperative Educational Services administrative budget in the amount of $6,650,577. Can I have a motion?
Motion?
Motion. Uh, Sue and Heather. Any discussion? Mike, I saw you had your hand up for?
Oh, no, I was just getting the mic ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Six, zero. Thank you. Uh, item number two, BOSIS ballot for election. Be resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, recommends the election of the following candidates to serve on the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Seat number one, New Pulse, three-year term, David Thompson, 76 Rocky Road, New Pulse, New York, 12561. Seat number two, Rondell Valley, three-year term, Brian Martin, 3338 Main Street, Stone Ridge, New York, 12428. Seat number three, which is an at-large position, three-year term, Barbara Carroll, 678 Old Post Road, New Pulse, New York, 12561. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Sue? Mike? Second. Questions on any of these candidates? Good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Six, zero. Thank you. Number three, polling service agreement, Highland Central School District and Ulster County Board of Elections. Be resolved that the Board of Education, based upon the Superintendent, approves the attached polling service agreement between Highland Central School District and the Ulster County Board of Elections for the annual meeting, which is to take place on May 17th, 2022. Motion?
Move it.
Al and Sue? Uh, any questions?
No, but that probably meant to say, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools.
Uh, yes, exactly. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Six, zero. Okay, uh, number five, BOSIS invoice discussion. Um, as reading this, I'm, I'm really not obligated to read it at this point.
$1 bill. I don't know why we, we don't need to discuss it, do we?
No.
We want to pay both of them now.
Want a card?
If it's been paid for the year prior in the past, you should stick with that, um, trend.
And that's for, is that for like school board's membership?
Ulster County School Board.
Ulster.
Yeah.
Okay, um, do we want to pay from this year's budget or next year's budget?
This year's.
What would you, this year's? Okay, recommended. Thank you. Can always go to the right person for that.
Whatever Victoria wants.
Right, so that says 2223. That's for the service would like to pay for 2223. I got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, old business. Public hearing, application for ballot. Public hearing to take place May 3rd at 6:00 PM for the annual budget vote and election. This hearing will take place at the high school cafeteria prior to open meeting of the Board of Education. Application for ballot. Please note that for this upcoming school vote only, voters who do not wish to appear at the polling place for fear of contracting or spreading COVID can check off temporary illness or physical disability on the application for ballot. The request for application must be received by the district clerk no later than May 10th if to be mailed. Otherwise, personally delivered to the clerk no later than May 16th, day prior of vote, to vote. Application for ballots, as well as for military, are available on the district's webpage. Capital project updates.
Just a comment there. I, you know, when deadlines say like the day, it's always good to have, what's the end of the business day on those types of notices? So what's the time deadline on May 16th that someone could potentially walk something in? 3:00 PM?
4:00.
4:00 PM. Okay, thank you. By talking about it here in this meeting, that makes it a matter of public record.
Thank you for picking up on that, Mike. Any more questions about that? Okay, um, capital project updates.
The only update I had was the, uh, that I met with CS Arch last week and, uh, the pictures have been taken and they are starting to work on the promotional materials, the preliminary materials.
Pete, do you have anything, um, you need to update us on? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
No, I mean, we, we adopted those resolutions at the last meeting, right? So everything is where they need to be. We met our timeframe. All right, thanks.
All good. Miscellaneous, any correspondence, any board members received that we want to mention? No? Public comment. Okay.
If there's something else, I have one thing I just forgot to say before. So the Future Medical Professionals Club is holding an event at the Highland Firehouse on May 1st. And basically, what we're going to do is have caregivers drop off the people that they're caring for, and all of us are going to, like, play bingo, go on walks with them, arts and crafts, things like that. And we're just looking for elderly people to come. So I was wondering if you guys know anyone?
Hey, 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 are you saying something?
We, yeah, if you know anyone. I have the, the poster, so I can, can you know it out to everyone? Okay.
What was the name of the group again?
It's Future Medical Professionals Club. That's at our school, but we are partnered with Ulster County Office of the Aging and Jewish Family Services.
Okay. And what time on May 1st?
Yeah. I'll send Ms. Niglia the poster, and then she'll send it to you guys.
What time was, what time was it again on May 1st?
It's going to be at 12:30 to 3:30.
Thank you.
And you know what I'm going to say? Stop at the office and take a box of COVID tests.
I swear, I wrote that down. Because that will, I'm sure that will take a lot.
And once you take them, you can't give them back.
Okay.
You can take them to college with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the board members have anything for the good welfare of the district at this moment in time?
Happy spring, everybody.
Thank you. All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Sue? Camille? Thank you.